Good evening, everyone, and we'll start off with a pledge of allegiance and Director Leoni, would you?
Will you all stand with me for the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Well, I'd like to welcome everyone to our November fifteenth business meeting of the Board of Directors for Roseburg Public Schools. Just a few housekeeping rules. This meeting is being recorded and it's actually live on Zoom. All of our business meetings are, school board meetings are on Zoom. So you can go to our website, the main page, and it'll give you the information. We will have public participation tonight. And so if you would like to participate, the table out by the front of the doors, you'll need to fill out a card. And then when we have a short recess, we will gather those cards up. Is there anyone from the news media here tonight? If there is, could you state your name and what organization you're with for our public record? Okay. So at this time, I'd like to take just a second. I'd like to thank Matt Hill, he's hiding behind the TV, our technology guru that gets all the stuff set up for us. He does much more than that in the district. He's, he's, uh, he keeps the district flowing when it comes to all the IT stuff. I'd like to thank our central office staff for helping prepare for this meeting. And I would especially like to thank the Eastwood staff and Principal Jake Hughes for hosting us tonight. We had a really, really, uh, well, well, wait a second here. That's fifty dollars. Nice comeback. And his staff for hosting us and like we did a tour. And this is such a beautiful campus and the staff and kids, I'm sure really enjoy it. This meeting also, if I haven't mentioned, will be archived on the website tomorrow. So you can go back and watch many of our meetings. And what's cool, if you have a student or a staff member tonight that's getting recognized, let your relatives and family know that they can go back to the meetings and watch the awards being given. I think that's pretty cool. Grandma and grandpas are, could be across the country. And this is something special for that. So at this time, I would like to ask Principal Jake Hughes to come up and give you, give us your report, please.
Well, thank you. It's great to know that this meeting will be archived so I can go back and watch it for years to come. Don't forget that. My name is Jake Hughes. This is my first year as principal of Eastwood. What a great school, staff and community I was fortunate to be a part of. I'm gonna tell you a little bit about myself before I get going. My previous three years in the district were spent as an assistant principal and athletic director at Fremont. General up. Prior to Roseburg, I taught and coached in Southern for ten years. I have a wonderful wife, Chelsea, two beautiful daughters, seventh grader Kinsley and third grader Charlie. Before I start with the formalities, I want to thank the staff, students. If you look around this space, how great to see all the student artwork, how welcoming, engaging, colorful. Again, it goes back to thankfulness for me to be in this position. Thanks for all that did that. Now, here you can see the strategic plan. I'm grateful for the work the board has done to create this plan. Appropriate timely instruction, effective operations, safe and inclusive practices, and leadership development at the forefront of our work keeps us focused and aligned as a district. The acronym LIK art was created before me, but it's something we lean into daily here at Eastwood. We believe staff and students alike should be acknowledged and celebrated daily. At the bottom of this is some statistical data about who we are from the number of students, staff, and so forth. Our spot. Eastwood, we have a very involved booster club. They facilitate numerous fun family activities throughout the school year. A few of them I'd like to highlight would be the trunk or treat, movie night, school carnival. With our beautiful forty-three acre campus, we're also able to host fifth grade camp, nature days. We have a functioning fish hatchery. Very fortunate to have that. I asked my title teacher Cynthia Wicks to go take some random sampling of students here at Eastwood. It's very important for me to know what students say about Eastwood. The question was, what have you learned at Eastwood? You can see some of the things students had to say. At Eastwood, I learned that multiplication is equal groups. At Eastwood, I learned how Crater Lake was made and how to do art. At Eastwood, I learned that you can feed fish at the hatchery and release them into our own creek. At Eastwood, you can do library and PE. The data. The blue lines are last year's data. You can see growth happened in all areas other than a small step back in math. However, we're focusing on that, on my plan you're gonna hear about today. Goal for this year, the blue lines represent our target goal for the year. In all areas, attendance, ELA, math and science, we're gonna grow ten percent. How are we gonna do that? This visual, and thank you, Michelle, for being the, moving the slideshow along. This visual represents a first, next, then model. Before I created our improvement plan, I did a needs assessment. Again, I was new to the building and I need to learn from my staff. I use that information to drive our theory of action statement and our continuous improvement plan. Parts of that plan include a rigorous observation schedule. Having me engage in formal and informal observations and be in every classroom numerous times before winter break. Working with my five D team and my math leadership team to create meaningful adult learning opportunities. The data collected in these observations will drive our learning after winter break and through the rest of the school year. This slide is a timeline that guides my team's work. When creating our professional learning, I expect the learning we do is connected to our continuous improvement plan. This helps staff see that there's a connection and a clear through line. In the center is a mantra that I rolled out called vote. Vulnerability, openness, trust, and the E stands for Eastwood. That was a critical component for us to grow and learn together this year and years to come. You can see on this timeline, the theory of action. You can see the end of the timeline is our North Star, our continuous improvement plan. Embedded in that timeline are some of the things I talked about for my math leadership team. My early ELA building goals that were created. The identification of the area of purpose when I go into all classrooms, learning targets, just to name a few. When thinking about educational outcomes for students, I wanted to highlight key players. You can see our team starts with the school board, central office, principal, teachers, students and families. The blueprint, game plan, continuous improvement plan, professional learning for staff, observations, and ensuring that we respond to that data collected. Eastwood, if we grow our adult learning culture as it pertains to our plan, then our students and teachers will receive the support that is needed and students will see an increase in educational outcomes for students. From my perspective, this is the most important slide. Starts with gratitude. Thanks to the central office for your support pertaining to our work here and my plan. Thanks to the school board for your efforts and what you do for all the students and staff. And thank you to all the Eastwood staff and families. I will never promise something I can't guarantee, and I can't promise that we're gonna grow ten percent in any of those areas I highlighted. But I can promise you that Eastwood will be excellent every day. Thank you.
Questions? Did a great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our next order of business is our student rep position or rep position, representative report. And Hannah and Sylvia are here, so take it away.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Hannah Heiburger and I am accompanied today by Anan Kolberg. We are gonna be your ASP representatives for today. So first of all, we have school. It's officially no school in November, as you guys all know. And two weeks ago, students had a three-day week at school with conferences taking their place on Wednesday and Thursday. It was super great to see all the parents up and around RHS with their families. And it was nice to see all of the students volunteering to help out on their day off. RHS marching band recently went to compete at championships held at U of O where the team made it and placed tenth. Band beat their record score and the director, Mr. Hanson shaved his head in celebration. Our national FFA, National Forest and National Vet Science Teams recently spent a week traveling through Tennessee, Kentucky and Indiana, where the teams were both awarded bronze level awards at the national conventions. Our Roseburg FFA teams got to be part of the sixty-eight thousand people who met for the convention. The theater department opened their fall play Clue on November third. And if you want to find out who did it, in what room and with what weapon, there are still three more viewings on the sixteenth, seventeenth and eighteenth. I was lucky enough to go to opening night and it was really great to see all the hard work that they put in. And I've had some great laughs too. FCC LA is currently having a food drive. Mrs. Bustamante's class is currently in first with Mrs. Ekman's class trailing close behind. And the Orange R, which is our school newspaper, published their fall edition of the paper and distributed to the student body on Halloween. Anan.
And for sports, we are, fall sports wrapped up their season and many of them just had an end to their season with their season banquet. The volleyball team won their first playoff game, getting them to the second round. Michaela Cunningham and Kayla Klaufenstein earned first team all league. Shalee Swartzen-Druber earned second team all league and Mason Taber with honorable mention. The girls soccer team welcomed a new coach this year and was able to bring in some wins. Ryan Bustamante earned second team all conference and Hannah Heiburger was recognized as honorable mention. Cross country had an incredible successful season. Three boys and the entire girls varsity team made it to state. Sylvia Ekman earned Southwest Conference Runner of the Year. Football ended off the season with a victory and had multiple players recognized at a conference level. Boys soccer had three players recognized, Trevor Baird, who earned second team, and Heath King and Jacob Smith were named honorable mention for our conference. Winter sports here at RHS have been just begun and student athletes are working hard at tryouts and preparing for their seasons.
Towards the end of October, leadership organized this year's homecoming week. Throughout the week, we got to see how the planning of events brought fun, inclusive atmosphere to our school. Students dressed up, dressed up for the spirit weeks. They played games, watched an assembly, decorated hallways and played powder puff football, all in the days leading up to our homecoming dance. The dance had an incredibly successful turnout with a little over a thousand tickets sold. We appreciate all the help from admin and all of our chaperones for helping us pull it off.
And during class right now, our team is split up into committees working on the logistics of organizing this year's winter week. With the funds leadership has, we decided to resume the club grant program. Clubs across the school put in an application to receive some funding. Leadership gave supporting funds to FCC LA, the theater department, FBLA, RC club and the GSA. Our class has also started a book study project where we have been reading various leadership books to grow our skills.
First quarter went really great and now our school is gearing up for the fun that comes with the holiday season and as finals approach in the next couple of months. Thank you, guys.
Any questions from board members? And I'm sorry that I apologized. I do want to say something about Play Clue. I too went on opening night. It was fabulous. And if you go Sunday matinee, they're going to announce, I think, the next play. I'm assuming it's probably gonna be a musical. If you haven't gone, especially directors, you need to go. I think tickets are ten bucks and it would be okay to make a donation to the theater over there. Costs a lot of money to put those things on, but I knew that the high school hit a homerun when they hired Mr. Pennington. I've watched him through theater, you know, in Roseburg through the years. You could tell the kids just really, really enjoyed working with him. So go to the clue, it's fabulous. It takes like ninety minutes. No intermission, but you should go to it. Okay, our next order of business. I'm gonna ask Director Minor to prepare. We're going to recognize students tonight. And she will call your name up, will call your name. And when she calls your name, we would like for the child to come up and all the relatives to come up. And she has a certificate and a write-up on you. So Andrea, take it away.
Well, this is very exciting. This is great. Ivan Jacob Clark from Fremont, an eighth grader. Where are you coming? Teachers, family, come on up. Ivan is known as a quiet leader and a kind and gentle student to the people around him. He is also a motivated musician with a talent for choir and band. He brings enthusiasm to class and is always willing to help others. At school band, at school band and choir events, he shows that hard work and dedication equals courage on a stage. Ivan is well respected by his peers, sharing deep thoughts during class discussions. Ivan is a wonderful role model and Fremont staff said they are blessed and proud to have him at the school. We all look forward to seeing what Ivan will achieve in the years to come. Congratulations, Ivan. So now we have Dixie Irwin, fifth grader at Eastwood. Come on up. Look at this. Are y'all in? Okay, good. I'll, I'll read while you can set up. Dixie is a fifth grade rock star. She works really hard and is consistently caring, respectful, trustworthy and cooperative with everyone. She is truly a great example of how you can do very well by being dedicated and kind. Eastwood staff loves Dixie's creativity. She is a very talented avid drawer. Throughout her years at Eastwood, she has taken on the nickname of Dixie Do. While she is growing up and leaving Eastwood soon to begin her middle school adventure at Joe Lane, Eastwood staff will always remember her kind-hearted nature and joy that she brings to campus every day. Congratulations, Dixie. There's also, they're getting a certificate, but also a gift card to McDonald's. Ivan got that too. Next, we have a student from our high school. L Parish, ninth grade. Y'all come up. L is a joyful, kind and gracious student. If there is ever a person who is debating about becoming a teacher, they should spend a class period with L as she lifts you and all of her classmates up. She is known for her willingness to take risks and go the extra mile. Staff at RHS are so thankful that L is a part of the school. If you want to see an example of her great work, staff recommend that you try and catch the school's upcoming rendition of the play Clue. L spent countless hours helping to build that set. Congratulations, L.
Now I'm gonna ask Director Johnson to come forward and he's going to recognize a couple of staff members tonight.
Thank you very much, Chair Cotton. I do appreciate the honor. It gives me magnificent pleasure to be selected tonight to honor two staff members from Eastwood. So when the Eastwood crowd come up, you might as well stick around and stay for a while. The first honoree is Erica Faulkner. Allow me to share what those others have said about you. Principal Jake Hughes shared that he reached out to the staff to help select the honorees for tonight. He was not surprised when Erica Faulkner's name rose to the top. Erica has helped to grow the school's math professional development and also worked on the PBIS team. Her leadership qualities are evident in professional development creation and implementation. Her understanding of high-level instruction practices is highlighted in her classroom every day. Erica's colleagues view her as a measuring stick, a distinguished teacher. Quotes from her colleagues about Erica include, "Her knowledge about teaching and reaching her students is inspiring." And she is a true example of a great teacher. Student, families and staff are fortunate that you have chosen to teach at Eastwood. And let me show you what your crystal apple award says. Erica Faulkner, third grade teacher, Eastwood Elementary, instructional leadership in action. Congratulations. And the next honoree from these. Very good. Thank you, Chelsea. And the next honoree from Eastwood is Chrissy Harden. Allow me to share. Chrissy is the most veteran member of the Eastwood staff. If it happened at Eastwood in the past thirty years, can I say that out loud? She could tell you about it. Her loyalty to the school, staff and students is unmatched. She is at almost every event that involves Eastwood students and they notice it. Students are quick to talk about how much they love Chrissy. Over the past few years, Chrissy has supervised a drop-off area in the mornings and the parents mentioned that she is the perfect person to have in that person's position to help their child have a positive start on the day. When it comes to instructing and guiding students, Chrissy believes in all students. She finds a way to connect each student, whether she is teaching them to decode words, clean up after themselves in the cafeteria, or problem solve with a friend on the playground. Educators like Chrissy are a true treasure to her colleagues, family and students. And your crystal apple award says, Chrissy Harden, instructional assistant, Eastwood Elementary, a history of exceptional learning support. Congratulations. Thank you, Chelsea. On behalf of the school board, we are very grateful that you took your time out of your busy schedule to come be with us tonight. If you came just for the awards and the certificates, we're gonna take a brief recess so that you may leave. Those who would like to be speakers, may I remind you the second time to fill out a speaker card? We do need the card to have you speak. Congratulations, everyone, and thank you so much for coming. God bless you.
Okay, apparently we have no public participation tonight. So we will move on into the review of agenda.
Yeah, thank you, Chair Cotton. The consent agenda now includes the October 25th meeting minutes and we do have updated gifts to the district also. And I just want to publicly thank all of those who have donated to the district. We had some great contributions to support our children here this month. Also, the monthly financial reports included in my superintendent's report on page 101.
Okay, so we'll need a motion a second for the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second motion. We have a motion and second. Any discussion? If not, let's call for the vote. All in favor? Opposed? Okay. We're going to move into action and discussion items. And first up is Assistant Superintendent Nie.
Thank you, Director Cotton. All right, this evening I need to share with you our 2223 Student Investment Account final report. This is the grant that we receive from the state and we are required to do a final report each year. The Student Success Act was passed by the Oregon Legislature in May 2019 and is divided into three key accounts. The Student Investment Account, SIA, the Early Learning Account and the Statewide Education Initiatives Account. School districts in Oregon apply for non-competitive grants to receive funding from the Student Investment Account. This is the final Student Investment Account report for the 2223 school year. The student, there are two stated purposes for the funds distributed under the Student Investment Account. One, meet students' mental or behavioral health needs. And the second one is to increase academic achievement for students, including reducing academic disparities for economically disadvantaged students, students from racial or ethnic groups that have historically experienced academic disparities, our students with disabilities, our English language learners, foster children and students who are homeless. Our SIA plan has four strategies. Create a culture of safety and respect for all students and adults. Ensure instructional materials and tasks are appropriately challenging and supportive for all students. Are aligned with content area standards and are culturally and academically relevant. Establish systems and interventions to identify and remove barriers for graduation for all students. And also ensure that our educators and families have the tools to support academic success for every student. Our SIA plan investments, our final SIA grant for the 2223 school year was over $4.3 million. It fell into four buckets: class size, well-rounded education, instructional time and health and safety. This is an overview of the things that were included in our SIA plan. Our investments were, we purchased books to grow PK12 classroom libraries, and three special education teachers. And we also pay for three additional days for our special education teachers to prepare for the school year. Fourteen special education instructional assistants and four elementary teachers to reduce class sizes. Six middle school teachers to expand elective CTE options for students. Two middle school teachers on special assignment. We purchased the ERLAB Independent Reading Level Assessment for our nine elementary schools. And to, the big one is to ensure access to before and after-school programs and all extracurricular activities. So we eliminated all fees for our students. They don't have to pay for athletics. They don't have to pay for elective classes. And this grant allows us to reduce all of those fees for our families. Our social emotional learning coordinator, which is Mrs. Mindy Indicott, and our social emotional learning specialist, two school psychologists, plus the extra duty pay for our six school psychologists for the extra time that they need to put in to support all of our students. We can say this year that we are fully staffed for 2324 for our school psychologists. And this grant has helped us with adding those additional school psychologists. Ten skills trainers, eight at elementary and two at the middle school. And then our four elementary STEAM teachers, science, technology, engineering and art teachers and mathematics. We have materials for our STEAM lessons. All of our elementary students receive STEAM lessons from our STEAM team. Two elementary music teachers, which now we have an elementary music teacher at Hall Eight of our elementary schools. We added a health and wellness teacher at the high school. And then we've also utilized it for materials for social emotional learning. For the 2324 school year, so this year, our final grant allocation is over $5.2 million. At our December meeting, you will actually be approving our grant agreement. The state is a little bit late getting those out this year. So that will go in front of you during our December meeting. And then in our January board meeting, you will get an update on all of our integrated grants. So that's the SIA grant, the High School Success, which is Measure 98, our Perkins Grant with the CTE grant, along with our Early Intervention Grant. So you'll get an update in January. So you get to see me in December and you get to hear from me in January as well. Any questions? All right. Thank you.
Our next agenda item, action item is consider the award of the Contract Services for the Winchester Elementary School of Seismic Project. And Danielle, you're going to take this.
Okay, so we gave a CMGC proposal from SMB James. And they are actually the only proposal that we received. And we are asking for the board to approve the proposal to, for us to accept their proposal for the Winchester project, which in your memo has more detail as far as the proposed fees for $20,341 and $131114.
We need a motion and a second and then we can have discussion.
I move to approve the SMB James as recommended.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, discussion. I was trying to remember how much money we have gathered from the, on the seismic grants.
In total, about $16 million.
$16 million. That's, this district has received seismic grants. So this Winchester, we were told tonight that this next, this coming summer, this building is going to go through a big seismic. And this is going to be really cool. And, and other things in, in this campus, so. Big kudos to the business department and everybody else that's involved in getting those. I know Roseburg is kind of a gem in the state. I'm talking about the high school gym. We really got started on that. They were very impressed with the folks that came down. And I, I think our name speaks for itself. And so it's nice to continue to get this grant money. So I'm going to call for the motion. All in favor? Opposed? Okay. Passes. Thank you, Danielle. Okay, the next three items, we'll do them one at a time, is concerning OSBA things. And this information you've all received. The first one is consider OSBA, no, the first one is, let's see. The OSBA Policy Committee, we have a candidate that we need to vote upon. He's from Glendale School District. And it's Dr. Tom Shanzes, Shanzes, Shanzes. And I don't know if any of you, was he at the, the dinner? He wasn't there? So. So I'll need, this is the only one that we have. So we'll need a motion and a second.
I motion to accept. Tom is our representative.
I'll second that.
Any just, any discussion? Okay, I'll call for the motions. All in favor of Dr. Shanzes. Please vote yes and those opposed. Okay, passes. The next one is to consider a resolution amending the OSBA bylaws related to the Board of Directors. Was this brought up at the? No, so the only information that we have is what we received. So we'll have, we'll need a motion and a second and we can have discussion if you want to. So a motion. So Resolution Amending the OSBA Bylaws Related to the Board of Directors.
Motion to amend OSBA bylaws relating to the Board of Directors.
Hi, second. We have a motion, a second, discussion. Okay, let's call for the motion. All in favor? Opposed? Okay. This is a little uncomfortable to me because we it's, it's, it's almost a dead deal. I mean, it is a dead deal, but they're asking us to do it. And the information came, we did get the information quite, you know, it was a long time ago, I thought. And so I'd go back and find it, so. And the last OSBA Resolution Amending OSBA's 2018 bylaws. We'll need a motion and a second and we'll have discussion.
I move to accept the resolution to amend OSBA's 2018 bylaws.
Second.
Okay, discussion.
So I did read through the bylaws and there were some things that were but really the crosswalk that they presented, breaking down each amendment with red lines and deletions and what they've done of what changed and what the proposed language is, it really is pretty much just, a lot of it is just cleanup. And it's not major, so. Yeah, I think it was okay.
Okay, appreciate that. Okay, I'll call for the motion. All in favor? Opposed? Okay. We're going to move into reports. And the first report is Curriculum and Instruction, and that is, that's you.
Okay, great. All right, well, this was our first meeting with the committee and and Director Minor, I are new, being new to the board, we had lots of questions about what was going on and, and what we're, what we're doing. But we spent the first first forty-five minutes at least going over and reviewing the 2223 ODE school report cards. And where students stand in relation to the overall state averages. And each of the report cards, you know, included attendance and academic success indicators, graduation factors, breakdown of educational staff and a breakdown of each of the categories presented by demographics and, and the class size. But the current reports, I mean, it's, you can see it up there. It's, it's all online. So if anybody wants to go into detail and look at it, you're more than welcome to do that. But here's some of the highlights that we, that really stand out. And that first one, our percentage of regular tenders went up 5% with 60% of the students attending, more than 90% of their enrolled school days, which is great. You know, it's a 2% higher than the state average. And the committee, you know, agreed that, you know, it's, it's, bill needs to be improved. Would like to get to 100%. But, but we're, that's something that we're continuing to work on. The, the district's proficiency, third grade English remained, remained the same. Eighth grade math proficiency dipped a little bit from 2% to 20, you know, to 29%. But just based on what we saw Jack presented in it here at this school, it's going across all the schools and really focusing in on giving tools to, to the teachers and administration to really beef those things up. So we're looking forward to seeing those grades improve in the next, in the near future. Ninth grade saw on track and continuing to improve. We improved by 1% to 81%, which is really important for, you know, knowing that the ninth graders, you know, have earned one quarter of total credits during, you know, to require to graduate. It's a very important indicator that they'll graduate from high school. It's really good stuff. You know, to, to require to graduate, it's a very important indicator, uh, that they'll graduate from high school, so it's really good stuff. Um, the last highlight would be, um. You know, fight the, the on-time graduation of five-year completion rates, uh. Uh, those, those are up, uh, which is great news, but, um, but. Director Minor and I had lots of questions about it. Um, about the stats, but again, it's, there's stats, a lot of it, a lot of those numbers are still kind of. Uh, coming from and coming out of the pandemic, so we anticipate those stacks or all the stat, static. Stat, it stacks, um, to improve. Um, after that, we spent some time looking at curriculum, uh, and, uh, you know, and it was, uh. You know, the great body works, which is, was, uh, what we use for K through five. Uh, we only use the K through five, um, program to that, and this was all approved, uh, previous years. Or was it last year that it was approved? Um, you know, and, um, and just our health, uh, curriculum was piloted. Uh, families in the community were given the opportunity to review it all, uh, and then, um, then it was fully adopted. Um, uh, last year, okay, it's important to note that the district has leeway in determining the curriculum. Uh, for each, you know, from this package of curriculum that we received. Um, and many of the topics that would be considered more sensitive in nature, um, are not being taught in our classrooms. And that was a, a, a big question that, um, uh, Director Minor and I had wanted to, to know what that was all about, and that's great news. Uh, after reviewing the curriculum, um. Let's see, uh, it was determined that there were no lessons that would cause concern to parents, but parents always have the opportunity to review those lessons. And opt out if they choose, um, but work's not done, um, and we, but we feel the committee has the right people working on it. So, great stuff.
Nice report, thank you. Building sites, oh, they have a question?
I just had a question on, uh, improvement. Um, Principal Hughes just said that he had set a goal for ten percent. Is that something that's being done, um, school-wide? Or district-wide, or are we shooting for a number?
I want to take that. Go ahead, Jill.
Well, and I did meet with each of the principals in the beginning of, uh, this fall, so I guess in August, we met with them all and shared data with them. And through working with them, they each set goals, um, through what they know about their school, what the trends of the data is, what they know about their staff. So, um, every school has set goals on the area of English Language Arts and Math, and, um, they have goals in other areas as well. So what you heard Mr. Hughes talking about, you will hear the same from other schools as well. And they're not, they, we let them set their own goals, so they didn't say everybody has to be ten percent, that's what Eastwood has chosen. And, um, some schools have very lofty goals, and some are setting, you know, different goals of where they're putting their, um, focus on, so.
But they are, if, the focus still is literary and math.
The focus is on English Language Arts and Math, and attendance is another area that many of the schools are focusing on as well. So yes, as a district, we, um, have focused together in saying that English Language Arts and Math are the areas we want to see those, that growth in.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, Director Anderson, it's your turn.
Thank you, uh, first of all, I'd like to thank Chelsea for putting together, uh, this PowerPoint. I have to put PowerPoints together at my career job, and I greatly appreciate not having to do one more. Um, also want to thank, uh, Stephanie and Cheryl, Tracy, um, Jared and Rod and, and Michael for their time and efforts. Uh, in the meeting, committee meeting, uh, main topics of discussion were, uh, vestibule progress, seismic updates, field updates. And a discussion surrounding, uh, lighting of the softball and football fields, so vestibule updates. I'm one of, yeah, there we go. Uh, all right, so, uh, Fur Grove and Eastwood Elementary, uh, have been completed. Uh, Roseburg High, as we've discussed in the past, is a little bit behind schedule, but our target completion date at this point would be, uh, Christmas break. And we are awaiting, um, cabinets to arrive in the, uh, for the installation in Winchester. So that's, uh, phase one, uh, phase two, we're currently working toward, uh, securing contractors. Uh, for future vestibules for Green, Fulton, and Sunny Slope. So, uh, seismic updates, uh, Eastwood and Winchester seismic rehabs are in the hopper, obviously after tonight. Uh, Winchester is a, a step ahead. Um, the career and technical education building at Roseburg High is going through, uh, the application process. Uh, we're looking for, uh, we're looking at a roof, uh, older than four decades at this point, so it's older than me. Uh, field updates. So, uh, softball field updates, uh, as of this week, the turf installation is complete. Uh, we're having Knife River return to complete the concrete and asphalt jobs. Uh, after the concrete and asphalt is finished, we will move, uh, onto the fencing and various, uh, field amenities. Um, present day, the, the field is on track to be ready to go for the, uh, spring season. Um, main topic of discussion, discussion in our committee meeting relating to the fields was upgrading the lighting for the prospective softball and football fields. Um, as we have an aging system there that will need, uh, to be replaced in the coming years. Um, we kind of came to the consensus on holding off further discussion on the lighting system till the next, uh, meeting. As most of those monies would my, most likely come out of the general fund, uh, we felt as a group that, uh, collective bargaining will take precedence over a project like this. So, um, Cheryl, who unfortunately couldn't be here tonight because, um, the passing of her mom, thoughts and prayers to, to Cheryl. She did say that there'd be a minimal contribution from Energy Trust of Oregon, but it's like four or five percent. Also, there's indication that, um, some money contribution could be, um, sent to us as the result of passage of Senate Bill eleven forty-nine. So Cheryl's gonna look into that, uh, for our next committee meeting to see what the actual impact of the lighting project would be on the general fund. I do want to commend Cheryl for locating external funds for all of our various projects. I found it pretty amazing, all the work that we're doing, uh, in our district with really none of it siphoning money out of our general fund. Um, it's, it's pretty, actually pretty incredible, so, uh, only major construction project impacting our general fund is the Title IX complaint. And then, you know, project, there was no decision to be made there, so, um. So we're planning on our next, uh, Buildings and Sites Committee meeting to be third week of January, uh, again, at, uh, Finley House by the softball field. And that's all I got.
Any questions?
Do I notice that the feather on the softball field is bigger than the feather on the football field?
I did take the screen hostage, but I do have a picture of the softball field, if you want to see it.
And I also want to thank whoever took that picture, that is just a gorgeous picture, and it really does the area justice.
That softball feather looks bigger than the football feather. I can just, my imagination.
I can either confirm or deny that, but I'll talk to my team about that.
That is a beautiful picture. Okay, let's move on to superintendent's report.
Okay, thank you very much, uh, Chair Cotton and, and to the board for this evening, I have a short report for you tonight. First of all, I do want to, uh, just thank our school board for recognizing all the work of our employees, and of course, thank all of our employees. For everything they do for our families and our community and our students. Uh, that, uh, American Education Week proclamation starts with a statement, something like. That education in our schools serve as a backbone for democracy. And that itself is a large enough job, but we're so much more than our staff does for our children, and want to thank them. We're great for our kids and we're great for the board and the community, so thank you for that. Um, Jay, when Jake talked tonight. He talked about central office, and why I, I think it's important clarification, when I talk about building a strong district team. Everyone's the district, we're all the district, I think there's been times we've talked about the district being that one building over off of behind Staples. And that's not the district, the district is everybody. Uh, there is a central office that supports buildings, that's our job to support the board, support buildings. And our staff and kids, um, and so I want to talk for just a minute about a strong district team. We are building and continue to build a strong district team, that's our people. Um, and, um, it's really, really important, you don't have to look far, um, to know that we need a strong team. We think about where we're at academically and enhancing the great things we're doing to have that open communication. We need a strong team, and that, that requires everybody, um, aligned and supported. And I'm excited about this team what we're, we're building. Every single member of this team, whether, like, tonight, we heard, uh, great things about a third-grade teacher and one of our instructional assistants. It doesn't matter where you serve in this team. There's not classism, there's not a rank and file, we have an organizational chart, but what's important here is that every person is needed. And every person contributes, and I'm grateful to work in an organization where, um, people hopefully feel like they're valued. That their voice matters, and, uh, and, um, they feel respected. Uh, we do, I'll continue to remind, um, uh, the board, we do have upcoming collective bargaining process. And this is a really important time to make sure that we can, um, be able to maintain. Our current staff, support them in their work, and make sure that we can also have that process. Help us continue to recruit great people. Um, I want to just talk for a few minutes about graduation, um, graduation is not a high school responsibility. Graduation is a collective responsibility, it starts here at Eastwood and across our elementary and pre-Ks, it starts before they come to us. We're working with our families, even when, um, we have our moms that are expecting. And that's work we're working toward, and so graduation is not a high school, um. Uh, it's not an expectation just the high school, it's all of us together as a community. But I did want to pick on the high school for just a minute and thank the high school for the work that they did this week, it was really cool to see their work. Uh, they met with every ninth-grade student, uh, and this isn't just unique, uh, to the high schools, it's something our schools do in different ways. But it's really neat to have this cafe, opportunity to sit down with ninth-grade students, ask them, um, how they're doing. Learn a little bit more about them, ask what's going well for them, ask what is challenging for them. Ask if they have an adult that they trust, and then have them reflect on, then share with them their grades. Their progress and their attendance, and then ask students and say, what do you notice? And then ask students to say, can you come up with a goal for your attendance and your grades? Our ninth-grade kids were awesome, and we've got some people in this room who helped put that together, and thank you, thank you, it was a great opportunity. And I think it fits really, really well and, um, seamlessly, and is driven by the board's expectation. Our kids graduate with a plan, and so thank you for helping us do that. Um, and I think, uh, Director Leoni talked tonight about ninth grade on track. This is part of making sure that we have a system that isn't just hoping it goes well. But a system that is listening and, um, adjusting and holding that expectation high. Uh, Director Hammerston talked tonight about the field progress, and, um, and so thank you for that, Director Hammerston. Um, Knife River is back to work today, um, Hellus is still on site, um, taking care of, uh, some gluing. And some other things on the field, hoping the good weather tomorrow, and, um, Friday will help on that. But we, I did want to let the board know that we are underway in seeking a corporate sponsorship for the field complex. This picture gives you an idea of the value that this brings to the community, to our students. But also the potential to enter a partnership with a local business. And, um, have that stadium complex named after them, that would help to, um. Make sure that we could replace turf long-term, making sure that, uh, students get what they need, and that this, that this complex remains a gem here in our community. I want to talk just for a minute about one of the, one of our strategic plan. Um, focus areas, and that's around safe and inclusive environments. Uh, we have seen an uptick in many of our buildings. And I think probably likely in the community around racial incidents among our students. Some of the things that, um, I've heard this year in our buildings that actually surprised me, and very few things do surprise me. Um, some of the things that have surprised me most as it comes to racial incidents is the response from some parents. Who, um, have responded, it's really not a big deal, it's how we talk to each other at home. Um, I think, I don't know why this seems to be happening at an increasing pace. Um, but I wonder about the impact of social media, and I not want to pick on Nicky and Minaj, but I will. Um, but just the, the use of our language becoming more of a culture in the way we talk to each other. Um, we are gonna start, uh, an advisory committee, we need to visit with our kids about this and our parents and our community. This is a community issue, it's not just our schools, our schools are sometimes a barometer of what's happening in the community. Uh, we are gonna really seek to find some ways to make sure our schools are places where our kids feel safe and heard and respected. And I hope everybody on this board and our, our community would agree that this is just unacceptable. Um, and sometimes we just have to have that conversation, this is not acceptable, and, um. We won't tell you how to act in your own homes, although we can give you some opinions that are based on, um, logic. But relative to our schools, that's not a place that this is acceptable, and so we're looking forward to, to, um, starting this process. Where we're taking a look at that, figuring out what we can do to think about, um, engaging our kids and community in that. Um, there's a Senate Bill, Senate Bill seven thirty-two. There are some parts of the Senate Bill that are, um, that I've, I've, um, might be careful to say here. Parts of the Senate Bill, I've, I've questioned the intent of this, some of the, this bill, but this bill does give us an opportunity to take a look at. Um, a locally-driven process with Senate Bill seven thirty-two around, uh, developing, um, a process to take a look at equitable outcomes. I think this would be a good, um, start there, so we'll start that work soon, and I would encourage the board to join us in that work. I want to just talk a little bit about our kids, um, I hope one thing you hear at every meeting is our gratitude for our staff, our board, and our, our students. Sure, just a couple of successes, there are so many, um, that we could pick, these were a couple just from this meeting. Um, we had students at Jolaine Fremont RHS Choir Band Students who auditioned, and they were accepted into the twenty-three Oregon All-State Bands and Choir Event. That came up, and Hannah and Annan mentioned that. We also had a great team of students who participated in, in FFA, uh, they were back in, in Indianapolis at the National FFA. Um, convention, um, and these were students that participated in National Forestry Team, National Vet Science Team. And we had students who were awarded the bronze level awards, um, and, and back in Indianapolis, we're proud of their work. And we're grateful to see that work happening in our, continue to happen in our schools. And, um, although these are just a, just a sampling, I would just say there's, you know, every, every board meeting, we could fill a meeting with the great things our students are doing. Um, both in the formal awards and formally the way they're, um, doing great things on the classroom. With that, that's all I've got tonight, thank you.
We will move into, uh, Board of Educational, our individual directors' reports. And I will start with Director Shirkle.
I don't have anything tonight.
Director Minor?
So I just want to say thank you and kudos to Principal Tammy Rasmussen. For honoring our vets who had worked at their school. Army veteran Doug Tyson, Navy veteran Todd Black. I thank you for teaching our children how we remain a free country. And how to honor those who fought to keep our freedom, thank you.
Director Anderson?
I got nothing.
Mr. Crimmits?
Just, uh, thankful to, um, Principal Hughes for, um, hosting us tonight. And seeing that, um, there's, the science aspect of, of this school seems to be so strong. And, and with all the nature, um, trails and, and the hatchery and everything. That's really exciting to see because we want our kids to also appreciate the beautiful place that we have here in Roseburg. And to want to stay here, so, um, that's just, uh. A reminder that, you know, that they've grown up in it, they'll want to stay in it. Um, I, I just, um, also appreciate the, that you are serious about goal-setting. And I know that you. And I know that you said that, um. You know, you may or may not hit the mark, but you, you shoot for the moon, you know, and I think you have to shoot. Um, high, and our kids, uh, can go higher than we sometimes expect. So, appreciate your vision on that.
Director Leonie? You have anything you'd like to say?
I have nothing more.
Director Johnson?
I thank you, Chair Cotton. Uh, at this time, I have nothing to, to share that will add or subtract from my strategic plan, and nothing that will benefit the students.
At this time, we're going to, uh, adjourn the meeting, but before we do that, just a reminder, our next, uh, board meeting. Will be December thirteenth at Hughcrest. And it'll be, uh, uh, we'll do the same, we'll have a tour, and, um, we'll move into our meeting. So at this time, I will adjourn the meeting. And the board will be going into an executive session. Over ORS one nine two six six oh two F in about ten minutes. Okay, thank you for coming tonight, really appreciate it.